Since it's baseball season, I thought it was appropriate maybe to start with Yogi Berra and a quote, "If you don't know where you're going, you might end up somewhere else." And that kind of sums it up for kind of what this is all about tonight, which is what the direction is of the city. I think we all agree, you've got to know where you want to go if you want to get there. And so, I think that's what Yogi was trying to say in this quote. And, you know, if you're taking a trip, you basically have to have a roadmap, or you have to have directions or something. If you're like my kids, you've got to have a GPS system to be able to go anywhere. But, the idea of having directions to be able to figure out, to go where your desired location is pretty important. Cities aren't any different. We need to have a plan, or at least a group of plans normally, to help us, guide us in the direction of future development within our community. And so, the first part of this is going to kind of give you a little orientation of some of the plans the city uses, and particularly the planning department, in going forward with development projects. Every year, our city council and our city staff gets together and puts together what we call a strategic plan. And that strategic plan has a series of what we call core values or objectives in them that basically focus on supporting our mission statement. And the mission statement for the city of Farmers Branch is at the bottom here, "To build a vibrant, dynamic community that consistently seeks to improve the quality of life for our residents." Everything we do is to do that. And so, the core values that we do have, we have 10 in our current strategic plan, and they range from public safety to parks to infrastructure. But the one the planning department uses the most is the core value number three, and that is to provide a strong, thriving commercial and residential neighborhoods through planning, land use, development, code enforcement, revitalization activities, and programs. And that's what we're going to be talking about mostly tonight, are those revitalization and programs at the end there. In addition to the strategic plan that we do every year with council, we have a more longer-range plan that's in place for the city. All Texas cities are required to have what they call a comprehensive plan. And a comprehensive plan is basically a 20-year roadmap or blueprint for directing future development within your community, or redevelopment in this case. So, our city, over the years, has kind of divided our comprehensive plan into three-sector plans, I'm going to call them. And in 2002, we completed the west side, basically from 35 West as the west side plan. We just completed, many of y'all looking around the room with familiar faces, we went through the central area plan process. We just completed the central area plan in 2012. And we also use, for the east side, we're still using the 1989 comprehensive plan for that portion of our city. But, I think it's good to know that, you know, you're looking at our city, you have kind of an economic engine on our west side, and you've got an economic engine on our east side, but the central area in the middle is kind of the heart of the city, and where everybody lives, and where our neighborhoods are. To kick off the central area plan, we had a public forum back in October 2010. We were in this room, many of you all were in attendance that night. We asked you a bunch of questions that night to help us focus on what was really important as we built the central area plan in Farmers Branch. We broke you up into small groups and asked you some particular questions to kind of get a consensus sitting at a table, and then we reassembled and asked you questions using the handheld keyboard keypad devices that you're going to use later on tonight with the voting process. And out of that, we came up with some real interesting conclusions, and I kind of want to go through a few of those quickly here. One of the first questions we asked in a small group setting was, "What are the city's greatest assets?" And the most popular answer we got from all eight or nine small groups was parks. You know, as a city in the park, I think everyone's love for parks and having a place to spend quality time outdoors is very important to our community. Secondly, is location within the metroplex. We all know what a great place this is to live, to get to work, to get to the airport, and so forth. And then, city services was the third highest answer. Questions that we had, one of the questions we had with the electronic keypad devices was, "What are the most important issues the city should focus on in the future?" And the most popular answer, I think you can see the difference in color there, the kind of highlighted in orange, the top one, "Revitalize neighborhoods and housing," got 32% of the response there, followed with "More shopping choices, improved schools, and improved appearance." So, it was pretty obvious to us from a city staff standpoint that we really need to focus the central area plan, excuse me, on neighborhoods and housing. What is the most important, one of the other questions we asked with the keypad devices was, "What is the most important element in your neighborhood?" And the most popular answer we got to that question was "Sense of community." And the second was "Public services and facilities, safety, and the quality of housing." And I think it's interesting to notice that "Sense of community" got twice as many votes as "Quality of housing." And, you know, what does that really mean? And to me, what that really pointed out was, people are more interested with what goes on around their house or in their particular environment than necessarily what's in their house or their house itself. So, again, focusing on neighborhoods. "What would do the most to revitalize your neighborhood?" This is one of the other questions we asked using the devices, and "Remodel existing homes" was the most popular answer, followed by "Better property maintenance and replace of existing homes." And then, "Control of on-street parking" was another top answer. I thought this was interesting in the fact that remodel homes had a higher score than replacing existing homes with new homes. And then, one of the other questions we asked was, "What kind of senior housing was most needed in the city?" And this was a surprising answer to me, and I think to city staff, that patio homes was by far the highest answer as the type of senior housing that was wanted in our community, followed by assisted living and townhomes. But, you know, the more you think about it, I think it tells us, I think, that everybody wants to have an individual, freestanding home, but they don't necessarily want the big yard or the, all the maintenance that goes on with homeownership. If they could figure out a way where they could have a smaller, but yet independent living environment, that would be perfect as they age. And then finally, we asked, "What is your vision for the city?" And we got, this was done in a small group session, so there wasn't really a ranking as to which was the highest or lowest. These were the kind of the three most common answers that we got out of that small group. And they were, "Small-town atmosphere, city in a park, and great place to raise a family." And I think if you kind of merge all three of those together, you get basically the thought that neighborhoods are very important. Where you live, where you spend your immediate time is the most important place. You want to be able to go to a park, you want to be able to raise your family in a safe environment. But, using all of those comments that we got from the kickoff meeting and the public forum back in 2002, combined with the strategic plan and the comprehensive plan that I touched on, city staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission and city council review and analyze each development that comes forward, proposed within our city. And now, we're going to watch a short film that kind of lists what's happened in Farmers Branch in the last three years.
All too often, most American inner-ring communities are bypassed for new development, but not Farmers Branch. Cited by the Dallas Morning News as being on the cutting edge of rethinking development in 21st century interior communities, Farmers Branch has not settled for business as usual. In fact, business in Farmers Branch has been anything but usual. New commercial and residential development in Farmers Branch during the past three years alone bear witness to the progressive and resilient nature of the city's leadership, who support the residential heart of the city by constantly promoting and expanding the 80% business segment of the tax base. Near the center of town, the business district at the corner of Josie and Valley View is undergoing an extraordinary makeover, ignited by the opening of the Walmart Neighborhood Market in the area, now dubbed "The Shops at Branch Crossing," a new neighborhood market prototype for the company. The 40,000-square-foot store has quickly become one of Walmart's best-producing stores in North Texas. A new out parcel was created just west of Walmart along Josie Lane in an effort to help create a better retail environment, which paid off handsomely when Panda Express opened in 2013. Continuing around the shops at Branch Crossing, Chase Bank recently demolished their 30-plus-year-old bank building and replaced it with a modern branch, complete with two ATMs and detached drive-in teller lanes. With the ongoing developments in the area acting as a catalyst for growth, the property owner on the southwest corner of the shops at Branch Crossing is currently undertaking a $1 million facelift for the established retail area. Similarly, the convenience store strip on the southeast corner has announced a facade makeover, as has a new bank on Belt Line Road. Moving out onto Interstate 35E, the French lens manufacturer Essilor continues to improve and expand their North American headquarters with more parking for their 650 employees, along with landscaping throughout their 21-acre campus, and the addition of a new three-story 60,000-square-foot research and development technology center. Just south of there, Elliott Electric can attest to the adaptive reuse of an aging warehouse building with a renovation of a 172,000-square-foot facility that will soon house their regional sales and distribution center. Once considered in danger of leaving Farmers Branch, one of the largest corporate saves in recent memory is illustrated in not just the retention of semiconductor manufacturer Maxim Integrated, but the redesign of their 33-acre corporate campus with a new $25 million research and development facility. Another adaptive reuse of an older structure can be found with the Olmsted-Kirk paper, relocation of their headquarters, sales, production, and distribution center to a single 192,000-square-foot location at the corner of Valley View and Luna. Nearby on the west side, the Dallas Texans Select Soccer Club continues to expand their 20-acre headquarters campus with six premier soccer fields, which enables them to host international tournaments each year, including the Dallas International Girls' Cup. A big boost to the local tourism market was the major renovation to the Sheraton Hotel on LBJ near the Dallas North Tollway. A complete makeover to the interior and exterior of the 309-room, 203,000-square-foot hotel makes it a prime lodging destination on what will be one of the most desirable segments of freeway property anywhere in the country when the LBJ Express expansion is complete in 2015. Weir's Furniture recently completed the relocation and consolidation of a number of business functions to Farmers Branch. The massive 400,000-square-foot former printing facility at the corner of Vinewood Road and Spring Valley now houses the Weir's corporate headquarters, warehouse, distribution center, and showroom. Softlayer keeps expanding at their new location on Alpha Road. Currently, the data storage provider has invested $17 million worth of improvements into 100,000 square feet. An old computer manufacturing facility was turned into offices, a state-of-the-art kitchen, and a banquet hall for culinary art catering in a project that included extensive interior and exterior renovations, including parking and landscaping. A great example of new retail and entertainment space introduced into a residential environment is the Victoria Restaurant and Banquet Hall on B Street. The new commercial building includes a full-service restaurant and bar, along with a 6,000-square-foot banquet hall for special events and celebrations. In surveying the progress of the past few years, the realm of public improvements also bears mention with the relocation of Farmers Branch Fire Station Number One, from its 50-plus-year-old location on Valley View, to a brand-new facility on Webb Chapel in the heart of the Farmers Branch residential community. Likewise, the replacing of the long-outdated and undersized animal shelter with the state-of-the-art Farmers Branch Animal Adoption Center has improved service to the community, produced much higher adoption rates, and set a standard for others to follow. The Dallas County Community College District Campus in Farmers Branch continues to grow and expand its 192-acre campus, growing from 10,000 students in 2010 to more than 13,000 just three years later. Brookhaven has added an allied health sciences building, a new automotive technology complex, and a new workforce and continuing education building. Turning to the residential stage, redevelopment of aging neighborhoods has resulted in more than 100 new homes built in Farmers Branch since 2010, carrying a value of more than $23 million. Adding to those new residences is the fulfillment of that promise of rethinking residential development in the 21st century with vertical, multifamily, and frequently mixed-use growth. A seven-acre development near the Galleria, Alon City Center will feature 327 luxury apartments with three courtyards, a pool, and a fitness center when it opens later this year. Combining residential options, Cambridge Crossing features 31 townhomes, 18 traditional single-family lots, and 57 patio homes, complete with landscaped common areas and water features in this residential village near Midway Road. On the west side of Farmers Branch, Provident Luna is a new multifamily community within Mercer Crossing, just south of LBJ. The 17-acre site will have 513 units, ranging from 700 to 1,300 square feet, in 20 three-story buildings. Nearby, Lincoln Royal will feature lakeshore frontage to Kalinas Crossing Lake and 40 acres of park-like setting for its 600 units in 22 three-story buildings. Finally, most eyes seem to be focused on the area of the Dart Light Rail Station, where decades of planning are coming to fruition with the first residential developments. Just south of the light rail platform, K. Hoffnianian is under construction with a 29-patio home village with two-story designs, rear-loaded garages, and a special landscaped common green with a water fountain. Then comes the newest landmark on the Farmers Branch horizon, Mustang Station. Located just steps off the Dart Light Rail Platform, the four-story mixed-use building will include 257 dwelling units on the upper floors with 10,000 square feet of retail space on the ground level. The area will be very walkable with an urban promenade and plaza. There will be three internal courtyards, a pool and fitness center, and an internal parking garage for residents and choppers. That's what Farmers Branch has been up to lately. What happens next is a question that poses both excitement and anticipation as this historic but progressive community continues to look forward.
I think you can see that a lot's been going on in our city since 2010. We've had our share of commercial activity as well as residential activity, and our future looks pretty bright for the next 12 months, too. We've got a lot of projects that we've had under discussion with developers, and I think you're going to see more of the same for the next year or two here in Farmers Branch. But really, we need to take the next step. And what I mean by the next step is move towards implementation of new programs and policies that would help in our redevelopment efforts, and primarily for our residential redevelopment efforts in our neighborhoods. So, we really need to work towards focusing on our neighborhoods in the next couple of years, for sure. And we have some really, really good neighborhoods, you all know that, but as I talk to other planners around the country or around the state, some of the facts and problems that I hear they have, we don't have here. And so, I think we're really blessed to have a very nice community with lots of parks and a good existing neighborhood structure. I want to kind of go over, give you kind of an overview of what some of our statistics are for our housing stock in Farmers Branch. We have about 8,200 single-family homes in Farmers Branch. And the bad news is, 84% of those houses were built before 1970. So, it's an aging housing stock. But the good news is that 90% of that housing is in good condition, and we've got the survey to prove it. But, to me, that really is amazing to think you have housing that old that's still in such good condition. That's unusual for any community to have. To give you, and I guess before I go on to that, you know, you have to analyze that a little bit more, and it tells you that our housing isn't substandard, but our housing is just outdated. We have to figure out a way to update our housing and keep our neighborhoods and our parks and all the good things that we have in our community still vibrant and usable. So, you know, we really do have a lot of opportunity to rebuild our neighborhoods. Our neighborhoods have a lot of characteristics that a lot of communities in the metroplex don't have. We have larger lots, we've got a much better park system than most cities do, we basically have mature trees. Look at these slides of existing homes in Farmers Branch, they all have gorgeous trees on the lots themselves. And we also have a great street network. How many of y'all have driven to Frisco, or Allen, or McKinney, and gotten lost in a subdivision because they have such a myriad or labyrinth of street systems that you'd get lost with the Cool Texts? Most of our streets are all, you know, kind of a grid system and connect to one another so you can get out of the community pretty easily, or stay in it, whatever you want to do. But, the idea, the idea that we have a great neighborhood, street, or residential street system that ties in with our arterial systems, we all take for granted. We've got Webb Chapel, or Valley View, or Marsh, all pretty close to our neighborhood so we can get out and get down the street if we need to. There are people in Frisco that take, you know, 15 minutes to get from their front door to the main arterial. So, we are very lucky in that, I think we all take that for granted. We also have great location, and by that, I don't really mean, excuse me, that we're close to the airport, or close to downtown. We all know that's true. But, that we're close to a lot of things that we can use more immediately, like shopping, like a park, like a school, like a rec center, or a library. The idea that all that is within, you know, a half-mile, or a quarter-mile, or maybe two or three miles is phenomenal for a city. That's the small-town atmosphere, I think, that you all were commenting on in 2010 that you wanted to keep. Give you a little statistic, since I am a planner, I have to be somewhat geeky in giving you statistics. Basically, what we have, we started in 1995 doing a housing, or a property condition survey. And that, we basically drove every street, looked at every house in the city of Farmers Branch, and gave it a classification as to its condition, and mapped it all out. And the results of that 1995 survey basically said that our community was starting to see some age in our housing structure, and that some of the basic, you know, preventive maintenance in our communities, thank you, had been postponed a little longer than maybe it should have been. And so, the idea, and so with the results of that statistic, with that survey, we came up with, the numbers were still really pretty good for a community, but it was kind of a warning sign. It kind of told us we need to get on our toes and take care of our community because if we're not careful, it's going to really go downhill quick. I think the city did a good job of that. In 1995, 70% of our housing stock was considered good. That's great for most communities. And 29% of our, and that was green, on this map, green is good, all right? And the second, 29% of our housing stock was classified as needing minor repair, and that's coded in yellow here. So, you can see kind of where the yellow sprinkles are in our community. And then, 1% of our housing stock needed a major repair, and that's the red, was signified with red. It's a little harder to see, but if you look really close, you can see that there were some red lots in there, too. These maps, by the way, are out in the lobby after the session tonight. If you all want to go out and look at it, I think it'll be interesting for you to take a look. But, the idea that we had 70% that was in good condition, 29% in needing minor repairs, and 1% that needed major repairs. Every year we've done this now, I mean, every other year, every two years we do this property condition survey in Farmers Branch. We just finished the 2013 one earlier this spring, and the results of this, I think, are phenomenal. Basically, what you see in green, a housing stock, 90% of our housing stock is in good condition now. That is amazing. And that only 9% of our housing stock, what you see in yellow again, again, the green is good, yellow needs some minor repair, 9% would need a minor repairs. And then, less than 1% were still needing major repairs. We still have a few red spots there on the map, but for the most part, we've seen our map go basically from kind of a sprinkle of yellow and green to almost a green map. That's amazing. I mean, I think that can't be over pointed out to you tonight. The city basically took a very strong stance in 1995, I'm sorry, basically in increasing code enforcement and getting, starting some programs to help low-income residents with property maintenance issues, and that's why we've seen a major change in our property conditions over the last 18 years. As the film showed you earlier tonight, we've also seen kind of a significant increase in our new construction, new residential construction in our city. We've seen over 100 homes in three years be built in our town. For a Frisco, or for a McKinney, that probably, you know, that doesn't sound like much, but for us, that's a pretty big number. And for some years, we had less than 10 that were being built in the city of Farmers Branch. So, the idea of getting that many a year, we've had 29 this last year in Farmers Branch. We're also seeing a wider variety of house come into Farmers Branch. Of course, we still have the single-family detached house being built in Farmers Branch, ranging from, you know, 1,800 square feet to 4,500 square feet on infill lots throughout our community. But we're also seeing more patio homes. One of the things that came up at the 2010 public forum, Cambridge Crossing is an example of that, that's just east of here, where they built, K. Hoffnianian built 57 patio homes, and they sold out in less than, in two and a half years in that subdivision. We've started another one, Mustang Crossing, just west of City Hall, next to the green line, with 29 patio home lots there. Seven have already been sold. I don't know if you've driven by there now, it's moving along already, and we're having great success with that type of development at that location. And we're also having conversations with home builders and developers about townhomes. There's a lot more resurgence of townhomes and condominiums in the North Dallas area. We haven't really seen that come quite to Farmers Branch yet, but I think in the next couple of years, you're going to see some townhome projects coming into Farmers Branch, too. So, we're seeing a wider variety of housing being built in Farmers Branch. The city has also partnered with Metro Study, a consulting firm, to better analyze, drill down on what kind of infill housing market would really work best in Farmers Branch, and then try to attract or recruit quality and then try to attract or recruit quality builders to do larger infill projects within Farmer's Branch. So we're we're working proactively to try to get bigger or larger scale infill projects to start happening in Farmer's Branch. We also have multifamily communities in Farmer's Branch. We have twenty-one multifamily communities. And nine of those multifamily communities are more than thirty years old. So they're starting to show their age too. We have about thirty-five hundred dwelling, multifamily dwelling units in the city right now. The good news, I think, is that sixteen hundred of those thirty-five hundred units, about forty-six percent are, have been built since two thousand. We have, we're seeing a new wave of multifamily start to come into Farmer's Branch. We, with the, along with the sixteen hundred I just mentioned, we're starting to see, we have eight hundred and eighty-five dwelling units under construction right now, multifamily development in our city. And another nine hundred dwelling units approved and probably coming online in the next year or two. So we're seeing a a new surge of of new style of multifamily development in our community. And it's it's a more of an urban village style. It's a higher denser type of design. They have, for the most part, internal parking garages. They have better amenities inside in clubhouses and and coffee bars and so forth, exercise, fitness centers and so forth, nicer courtyards. And the amenities within the actual apartments are are nicer too. So I I think at the end, in two or three years, when all these units that I talked about get built, what that works out to is about sixty-five percent of our multifamily housing stock will have been built since two thousand, which isn't bad. I mean, that's a pretty good mix of multifamily. Now, we still have lots of work to do with multifamily in the older units, don't get me wrong. But the idea that, you know, it's not a dire picture in reference to multifamily in our community is something I think that needs to be pointed out. But kind of getting back to residential neighborhoods. As we were starting with the Central Area Plan in two thousand and ten, we drove the whole city and all the residential areas and tried to kind of come up with the various characteristics throughout all the city. And and it was our attempt to try to divide the city's residential area into twenty different distinct neighborhoods. And this map, by the way, is outside in the lobby too, if you want to take a look at it. It will be on the on our website too, if you want to get that later. But the idea, and these lines aren't etched in stone. They were our best estimate as to kind of where neighborhoods began and ended. And it helped us focus on putting together a a series of strategies that might work for the city. Because, you know, we have, like I said, eight, two hundred, single family homes in our community. There's not going to be one solution that solves it. There's going to be, there's going to have to be kind of a a whole toolkit of tools that get used to help us revitalize and redevelop our our neighborhoods. And so with those twenty neighborhoods that we divided the city's residential areas into, we came up, we looked at, we analyzed them for their weaknesses and their strengths, their unique characteristics. And tried to come up with our best feel for what strategies would work best to maybe either stabilize that neighborhood or keep it at its its current level. Maybe it was a great neighborhood, just needed to stay where it was or needs an influence of maybe new infill construction or revitalization into that neighborhood. So we kind of created a toolkit and a series of within a redevelopment strategy. And some of the basic tools that we had in that toolkit, I'm going to kind of quickly explain. The two that you see at the top there that are kind of highlighted in orange are two programs that the city has already been doing for, or has done in the past for a number of years. The first one, and I'm just going to quickly go through these. Kind of keep in mind that these different programs, because at the end of my presentation, when we pass out the voting devices, you're going to have a chance to say, yeah, I like that program or I hate that program and give us some ideas to what what you want as a community. The new home infill program, city basically has two of those right now, the Renaissance Program and the Demo Rebuild Program. The Renaissance Program is limited to just the kind of Branch Crossing area and now the Farmer's Dell area, which is the neighborhood just east of Branch Crossing, but just west of the kind of four corner shopping center or the old Chase Drive-In Bank, if you guys, actually don't know where that is. Anyway, but so it's that kind of limited neighborhood. And the the gist of the Renaissance Program is the city would buy a distressed piece of property. It would tear down the the substandard house on that lot. And then it would market the property and sell that property to a prospective home buyer that has agreed to spend five times the value of the lot on a new home on that property. And so the how, the city has done thirty of these lots over the years. We've sold twenty-eight of them. I think we have two of them available right now. I'm sure John Land, if he's in the crowd, would be happy to meet with you after the tonight's meeting and sell you a lot if you want it. But the the idea that it's been a pretty popular project or program within our city is, I think, a good point to make. To give you an idea, in two thousand, the overall property value of Branch Crossing was about nineteen million dollars. That same area, the property value of that same area in two thousand and thirteen is right a little over forty million. So it's doubled in the course of thirteen years. And that's not just because of the city's project. The city's thirty lots that it's done has stimulated private industry to come in and do the same thing on its own without any assistance from the city. And if you drive through Branch Crossing, you can see a lot of that has occurred. The second program I mentioned was the Demo Rebuild Program. And the Demo Rebuild Program is open throughout the city, anywhere in the city. And basically, it's to somebody that wants to buy an existing house and lot, tear down the existing house and put a new house on that property. And in doing so, the city, and you meet all the approval process, I'm not going to go into all that. Basically, the city will freeze the the tax value of that lot before you made any improvements to it for seven years. So you'll pay your city taxes only on the value of what it was before, not the, you know, the improvements you made on the house. So it's it's a good program. We've done six of those over the the years. But it's an interesting concept and one that a lot of cities are starting to replicate from what they've seen in Farmer's Branch. Another program the city used to do for a number of years was a revitalization program. And in kind of quickly overview of that, it's basically a property owner would could make significant improvements to the exterior of their house and the city would give them some sort of rebate back. If you went, for example, if you did twenty-five thousand dollars worth of improvement on your house, the city would give you a two percent of the cost of that back in a cash rebate and give you a fifty percent reduction in the building permit fees that were necessary for that structure. It was a nice way to try to give, encourage people to go ahead and make some significant improvements to their property. It also handled smaller projects than twenty-five thousand, but you just didn't get quite as much back. You could do a smaller type of exterior improvement to your house and maybe get a three hundred dollar Lowe's card for that. So it was it was an interesting, we did eighty-six, no, eighty-five projects using that program over, I think, three years. One of the programs that a lot of cities are starting to do is a neighborhood assistance program. And that's basically an opportunity to try to get neighbors to know your neighbors. I mean, the Crime Watch Program, everybody knows about that and how that works and how you try to get your neighbors involved in watching for that. But neighborhood assistance could be a little more than that. It could be just, you know, having the opportunity to get together, you know, Friday afternoons and share hot dogs. And it could also include maybe a neighborhood project that is organized. Some cities have put together some of their general revenue funds, just a small amount, into a special grant fund and let the various neighborhoods compete for a particular project or a series of projects. And then to say landscape maybe an entry corner of their of their neighborhood or maybe put in some additional improvements along the the street or something and get a city grant to to make that improvement. Another program that we're considering doing is the Neighborhood Street Sign Program. And the way that would work, and we have worked out all the bugs on it. But basically, if enough people in the neighborhood wanted to have a street topper put on the top of the of a signpost, street signpost, that kind of identified that neighborhood and we've got enough signatures to do that, we'd figure out a way to to get that done throughout the neighborhood from a city standpoint. We have an example of this street topper out at one of the tables too, if you want to look at that. But it's an idea, simple idea, to try to create a little more neighborhood identity within our, within our community. Design Consulting Service. I don't know about you, but I don't know how many times my wife and I have, you know, thought about doing a particular improvement to our house, but we just didn't have that initial professional advice to kind of get us off the ground, get us interested in maybe taking the next step and and working with a contractor or helping us figure out in our heads exactly what type of improvement we want with a bathroom or a bedroom or so forth. So an idea and a possible project would be going forward and having a group of professional developers, maybe an architect or a landscape architect, or maybe even plumber and electrician or home builder, kind of come in, donate some of their time once a month or a periodic basis and make, make appointments to meet with citizens about particular improvement projects they wanted to do in their house. It's an idea just to kind of get them kickstarted into doing something positive for, on their, on their lot or in their house. This could kind of blend into the city providing a list of native plants that grow well in our community and give people kind of an upper hand on planting the right plant at the right location on their lot to improve the neighborhood too. It also could include a simple pattern book, giving people an idea of a book to kind of flip through and get simple ideas as to how to add a bathroom or add a bedroom to an existing nineteen sixty or nineteen seventy style house that we have in our community. And believe it or not, just adding tree canopy within a neighborhood can can really help revitalize that area. Adding a tree canopy on both sides of the street does a number of things. It does help in property values. There's national studies that that show that that works. It does increase the amount of pedestrian activity in the neighborhood just because people like to walk in a in a setting like this as opposed to, you know, in the blazing sun on a on a street. So the idea of creating more street canopies in some of our struggling neighborhoods would be a a simple way of starting to improve some of the attractiveness of that that area. We could designate certain number of streets in certain neighborhoods each year and kind of take bites of it each year and and add trees throughout throughout our community. One of the comments that came up in two thousand and ten with the public forum was a problem on on-street parking. Our residential streets are typically twenty-eight feet wide. And by the time you park one car on one side and another car on the other side, you've got maybe a nine or ten foot area in the in the middle to to pass with. And that can get a bit dangerous and it also is kind of unattractive, as you can see there. And it's, it causes just some some other circulation problems within neighborhoods. Some cities have put together a parking perm, a residential parking permit program, that's hard to say. And basically, how those generally work is each household would be given maybe two visitor parking space, parking permits. And those would have to be put like in the dashboard after a certain time, you know, six P M. at night or something. And they, then that car would be allowed to stay there overnight. But if a car doesn't have one of those permits, they run the risk of getting a ticket for being parked on the street. This is, I I'm not saying we're ready to do this. It's just one of the other programs that is available. And some communities, some communities have found it very helpful in 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 creating a better streetscape along there's some of their neighborhoods. Park expansion. This could be as simple as just changing out some of the the playground equipment in an existing park or maybe adding a little stretch of sidewalk to get a better connection to that park. Or it could mean, in a struggling neighborhood, the city takes some initiative in trying to find a group of lots that it could buy and create a small neighborhood park that would help stimulate future redevelopment within that neighborhood. Wouldn't it be great if we could work towards in the next ten or twenty years to have a neighborhood park, kind of like Kerr Park or Morning Star there, in every one of our twenty neighborhoods? I think that would be a really great goal for us to work towards. Well, those were all the different programs I kind of want you to keep in the back of your head for voting at a later time. But there are a couple of other items I kind of wanted to talk about before you get to vote. One is walkability, and that's kind of a new term that a lot of people don't know what it is. Basically, the definition is the ability to either walk or bike to a destination, to a nearby destination in a comfortable way. There's walks, you go on, when you go home and you get in your computer tonight or this next week or something, go to walkscore.com and just check, look, check some of the other cities and wherever, you know, other other states or in the metroplex if you want, and just see what their walk scores are. A lot of realtors and people are using this in the selling of their house. If a house has a good walkability score, makes it more valuable. Our city actually has a pretty good walkability score right now. What this map is showing is basically the darker the green, the more walkable it is. So you can see we've got some areas of town that are really quite walkable. And then we have some others, you know, light green, that are still need some work. So the idea of working towards creating a more walkable community from all of our twenty neighborhoods, I think, would be a good goal for the next ten or twenty years. And to help us do that in two thousand and eleven, we created a Trails Network Plan that kind of took it to the even the next level of development, trying to find out where bike lanes could go and where more wider trails could go and make for some more significant connections throughout our city and and connect our retail centers to our our neighborhoods a little easier. Along with neighborhood kind of beautification and redevelopment and the walkability, you know, some of our residential streets are going to have to go through some modification. Where, like I said earlier, a lot of them are twenty-eight feet wide. That's a, that's really actually a pretty good width for a residential street. But, you know, adding a little more sidewalk or adding a median in the middle to help control or calm some of the park, some of the traffic as you enter into a subdivision, not not a median everywhere, are little techniques that really can make for a better appearance as you enter into a as you enter into a neighborhood or just create a better walking environment, a better living environment for everyone. Other things, the landscaping, of course, we talked about putting canopy trees in already, how that can help a community, but also neighborhood identification, trying to create, you know, maybe some sort of sign or some sort of monument that announces to people that you're entering into X neighborhood or Y neighborhood is another technique that I think we need to consider doing more of throughout our city. And kind of on that same thing, the idea of kind of getting double duty out of some of our drainage areas would be a good idea. They serve a great purpose in helping us not, you know, helping our houses not flood, but, you know, this is Texas and 10 months of the year, there isn't a whole lot that's going on within those drainage areas. The idea of maybe creating some trails on the sides of them, getting some more, making the channels more naturalized, more pleasant to look at, and maybe create, you know, some more walking paths and linkages through connecting neighborhood to neighborhood is another concept we'd like to promote in the years ahead. Well, with that, I'm going to end my presentation.
We've heard a lot from, you've heard a lot from us, now it's our turn to hear from you. These keypad polling devices, everyone can respond individually, they are anonymous. You'll see the immediate results of the answers on the screen. And please push your button verbally, you will get a green light on the upper left-hand corner if you are pushing it correctly. And the system records your first answer, you can't change your mind. And all the questions are related to what you've heard from Andy tonight and our neighborhoods and our central area plan. How long have you lived in Farmer's Branch? Zero to five years, six to 10, over 40 maybe, possibly? Wow, that's a high number there, 26%, 28%, 25%, all at least 11 years and over. Okay. Why do you live in Farmer's Branch? Is it because of our wonderful location, our great housing stock, parks and recreation opportunities, low tax rate, or maybe something other than those selections? Wow, 59%, that's a clear majority there of location. Now, why do you live in your neighborhood? Is it because of the sense of community that Andy talked about? You feel safe? Our beautiful parks and recreation? Is it close to your job and your school or your school? Sense of community, 30%, a big majority there, and then varied throughout. How long do you plan to live in your current home? 61% said more than 10 years. That's great. Thank you. What is the best feature of your home? Do you like your lot size or your house size? Maybe your living space? Maybe you have an awesome backyard? Or your neighborhood? 41% said the neighborhood. What is the worst feature of your home? Same answers. And don't everyone say neighborhood, because that's not fair. Other, thank you. Does your neighborhood have a specific identity? Andy talked about that. 67%, that's really great, we like to hear that. If you plan to move, would you like to stay in Farmer's Branch? 58%, yes. How often do you visit a city park or city recreational facility? That includes the senior center, the gym, the pool, the majority weekly. Okay, now we would like your feedback on some specific programs that Andy had mentioned that can help us revitalize our neighborhoods. How important is it for the city to pursue, and when we say pursue, we mean using a combination of tax dollars, grant funding, and/or staff time on the new home infill programs? And the examples of the new home infill programs were the demo rebuild and the Renaissance programs. Is it essential that we do that? Important? Interesting, but not important? Not worth considering? You're not sure. That was pretty varied, 37%, 30%, pretty close there about important and interesting, but not important. How important is it for the city to pursue existing home rehabilitation programs? And those were the home improvements that the city reimbursed a portion of the cost. 36%, 39%, very close there. Essential and important? How important is it for the city to pursue a neighborhood assistance program? And those included the street sign toppers and the neighborhood associations and the crime watch programs. 45% important? How important is it for the city to pursue a design consulting service program? And Andy had talked about how the owners would get support from a design professional for a future project, including maybe a new home or landscaping. Pretty splitly divided between important and interesting, but not important. How important is it for the city to pursue a street tree canopy program? And that was installing new trees along the residential streets. Again, pretty evenly split between important and interesting, but not important. How important is it for the city to pursue an on-street parking program? If you recall, that was to establish a parking permit that limits the number of vehicles on the street. That was a little bit more important to you guys. How important is it for the city to pursue the park and expansion and enhancement program? That was geared towards adding new playground equipment in the parks or creating new parks in the neighborhoods, pocket parks, for example. 42% important. Okay, so we've reviewed seven programs that you all just voted on individually, but now we want you to pick the one that you think would most benefit the city, that we should place the highest priority on. Wow, 42% existing home and rehab rehabilitation projects, excuse me. Okay, this next set of questions are all geared towards feedback on the goals and objectives that are found in our central area comprehensive plan. Do you support using your tax dollars to improve walkability within the city? And that walkability meant enabling residents to walk or bike from your shopping centers, school, work. And that can include new trails, trail connections, and along the public drainage channels. Pretty varied. Do you support using your tax dollars to provide more neighborhood parks throughout the city? 30%, 33%, somewhat support? Do you support using your tax dollars to improve the quality of a multi-family housing Do you support using your tax dollars to renovate our existing shopping centers? And that was pretty varied between, evenly split between support, somewhat support, and don't support. Okay, we're going to wrap up this portion of the evening, just two more questions. What do you feel is, or what is the most important issue facing the future of Farmer's Branch? Is it improving our neighborhoods? More shopping choices? Improved neighborhoods and more shopping choices? Pretty close there. And lastly, from what you've seen and heard tonight, what Andy presented in the video, do you believe that the city is headed in the right direction regarding redevelopment? Well, that's great to see that the majority of you strongly agree or agree that the city is headed in the right direction.
Right now, we have a choice between cable or AT&amp;T or something like that, and we don't have any FiOS, we don't have the ability to have high-speed networking, and I think that that's something that would be an improvement to our whole community.
Okay. How about some staff members? Anybody working on that?
I met with AT&amp;T just recently and they are rolling out a new program later this year that I think will address that program. It's a whole new concept of a wireless type program that's, they say is going to revolutionize the industry, they're just not ready to announce it just yet, but it will come out later this year.
I wondered if we got sprayed for mosquitoes last night? I didn't hear anything.
Like to be notified when we spray. You can email Stacy and he'll put you on a list to notify you when we do spray in your neighborhood. So, if you want to know, and we are currently, just to let you know, we have traps set around the city and we watch the counts of the mosquitoes we catch in the traps. And as the counts go up, then we start scheduling spraying in those neighborhoods. So, we had a couple of neighborhoods where the counts were elevated, they're not as high as a lot of the other communities. And also, so, we're glad to see that, where people are taking care of their properties and managing the water so that we're not getting mosquito breeding, which then, you know, leads to the West Nile. So, please be sure that you continue to watch your properties, to make sure you dump any standing water. Actually, Stacy's got some dunks back there, somebody likes some dunks that treat standing water, and you can take those with you and treat any of the areas that you think might need it. But we're certainly concerned about the health and safety of our residents and mosquito breeding is certainly important to us. So, if you want to know, please email Stacy Wright.
Question, with all the additional building and parking complexes being built up, how is the infrastructure of the city holding up? Specifically, the water supply, sewage, and also what does this mean for additional police and fire?
Our water sewer infrastructure is fine, it was, we have a master plan for that and it is, a lot of it is in place, we're very fortunate that way. So far, roads are holding up well, and so I don't foresee any problems with water sewer.
As far as we look, everything from our EMS response time, our fire response time, how many firefighters we could put on the scene of a structural fire within eight minutes, we really keep our eye on that. So, as the growth starts coming, we'll see that start impacting our response time, and at that time, I'll be bringing recommendations forward to the city manager, looking at additional staffing. One of the programs that we do have going on right now, sort of based on the relocation of Station 1, is we're working on finding a new location for Station 2 to be able to improve our response time across the city. And that was presented to council last Christmas, and we're currently working through that process right now.
You may see ground storage tanks around the city, so a lot, most of them are above ground, some in the ground. We buy water from the city of Dallas and basically there's two fees involved. There's how much capacity you want at any one time, plus how much volume you buy. And normally, we pump into those tanks at night and then disperse during the day, which saves us a lot of money in the ability to get a lot much water at one time, because obviously the usage at night is not as high as it is during the day. So, that's part of that whole system we have up with.
We have a lot of people driving through Farmer's Branch now. I know it's a lot of volume on Valley View and Webb's Chapel. I'd like the city to promote the city to park more with all these strangers driving through our town. And with that, I'd like to see that we expedite their trip through this town with blinking lights at some of these intersections that we have. They run all night, and it's kind of frustrating in that lights cycle all night long when they could be turned into blinking lights. The other thing is right-turn lane only at LBJ Freeway at Marsh and Webb's Chapel would expedite the traffic through here.
We've got a beautiful city and we need to let more people know that.
The other thing I'd like to mention is, I'd like to have a wet/dry election in this town.
As far as the streets concerned, we have, you know, we've worked very closely with LBJ Express and those people, and I've made very apparent to them that we do not want heavy trucks and heavy things coming through our city. And I think they've done a very good job with that. They said, you know, we've said we prevent that and we'll stop them if you don't. And I think they've done a good job. They've put signs at all the truck stops and all that and warn, and I think they've done a pretty good job of keeping that. We can't keep all of the traffic off the street, obviously, it's going to be 2015 before the thing is completely done. And we do, I think, you know, one of the things that, we're in the city every day and we kind of, the things become normal and we really don't realize a lot of the things that's happening on a day-to-day basis. Even us in the council, we're always on it, there's a bunch of things going on. But, you know, as I travel around today anymore in other areas, I meet so many people that say, you know, I was just through your city the other day, it's different, it has improved, things have changed. And we're getting very positive comment from people. And probably some of that traffic that we got going through this city may end up be residents here in the future. So, there's good sides to all that, but I know we have tried to, as much as we can, to keep the effect on a residence to a minimal. I mean, obviously, I'm surprised more of them don't come down Valley View, quite frankly, than they do, but they are, I think a lot of people, the traffic numbers on LBJ has dropped dramatically, a lot of people just realize, they just don't go there anymore to go the way. But I think it's going to be great when it's done, but it's sure like major surgery when you're doing it.
It will be, but consider more of the blinking lights when these, like at RHD Hospital or what do they call it now? That runs all night long. The light at Green Hill School runs all night long. You've got Valley View at B Street running all night long, and they need to turn, before we get these things cycled and they're, don't impede the traffic from driving through our great city.
Well, I agree with you, and maybe that's something we can look at as far as, especially at night. I think most of you realize our lights predominantly truck flow traffic north-south. Most of the duration on lights in Farmer's Branch are longer green going north-south than they are east-west, because that's where most of the traffic goes. You know, us that travel east-west a lot, we really don't like it, but I may understand it in a.
You know, we have discussed the pros and cons of flashing lights at night for years and years. And we have it to this point because one of the things that happens when you set up a bunch of flashing lights late at night, the traffic on the main street starts to go 45, 50 miles an hour because they've got no reason to ever stop. There's pros and cons to everything and there's unintended consequences to some of these things. But there are, and there are special considerations. You mentioned Valley View's B Street. If you were sitting on B Street and the light was flashing red and flashing yellow on Valley View, it's very hard to see anything coming. Same thing at Tom Field in Valley View, sight distance problems. You've got to, it's not as simple as you might think. But let's not say it might not be a good idea at a couple of intersections here and there.
I was wondering if the city would become involved in the organization and maybe the financial assistance for burying our power lines? That would spill over into a lot of the goals that were listed on the screen earlier, like the improvement of the neighborhoods visually, the houses would look tidier, and if you're going to put in tree canopies, then they won't be cut back by power companies.
Some of these streets probably over time are going to be reconstructed, especially our main streets and thoroughfare streets and the things that we'd probably be looking at.
Well, I know it's very costly and you have to get the entire block to agree to pay for it, and I didn't know if the city would consider contributing to that in the interest of the whole community.
Just curious, you said Rotary, and I'm not really sure, what is the process to sort of bring the county or the city wet? Because I think with all the multi-family dwellings that we're building, we're sort of drawing a younger crowd, we're drawing a certain type of person, and I think we're losing a lot of business by having people drive out to Addison to go eat at establishments and drink and hang out. We're losing probably good grocery stores and good opportunities for other places to come in that might want to sell beer and wine, and that might be a piece of, but they don't want to come here because it's dry. And so, I would be.
People say we, you know, restaurants. Well, we give special use permits to almost every restaurant who has requested alcohol sales. You can buy alcohol in almost any restaurant that desires it in the city of Farmer's Branch, but we do not have carryout beer and wine sales. which we do not have carry-out beer and wine sales. In the past, most of it years ago was all down south of Walnut Hill. And then Addison passed it. They kept it in a specific area, which I understand you can't do today. You can't zone it just a specific area of the city. If it is passed, it is citywide. We do have, Addison now has it citywide, Carrollton has it citywide, Dallas has it citywide. And I know, you know, it is up against our corporation limits on all sides, and it's, you know, it's a tough issue. I'd rather than none of them have it, but since we, since everybody does have it, I think you have to look at it in a little different light than that. But that's the process, and it does, there are, we, developers, sometimes that is an issue with them, that people coming in, retail establishments, desire beer and wine sales because it has a high profit related with it, the sale of it, and some of them tell us, quite frankly, that they're not interested in moving here unless that would happen.
I'd like to know what the long-term plan is that the city has in mind for that area. We have some unique circumstances, and we've been trying to work with the city on some help with some infrastructure issues we have, and the feedback we're getting seems like y'all aren't real interested in our area, so I'd like to know what your plan for our area is.
Is this the Oak Brook section you're talking about?
Yes.
Well, I think in what you're talking about, and in the Oak Brook section, where you're talking about, of course, that, most of the streets up there are privatized, they were built by the developer, and it's, they're owned by the association up there, and the infrastructure and all that's owned it. And it's an unusual situation that they have compared to most of the other areas of the city, so it would be a major undertaking, obviously, to do that type of a project on a full-scale basis up there.
So what is the third-year plan for that area? According, what is the city's point of view of the third-year plan?
Well, in reference to the central area plan that we put together, we had some of the programs that I outlined earlier tonight, basically working more with some of the rehabilitation of those existing homes in that area. I think we did have a section on some streets gaping, but nothing in the thirty-year, or the central area plan, which is a twenty-year plan, suggested that the city would take on ownership of the streets.
Okay, it concerned me with the amount of tear-down and that sort of thing that you guys were discussing, so, and I've heard some other things referenced that it would be ideal for some senior area. That has come up in...
There's no particular...
There's no point in your plan?
...twenty-year plan to replace Oak Brook with new, you know, large-scale housing.
Okay, and how would we go about getting some ongoing conversation and dialogue to continue? We seem to start and stop with...
I'll be happy to...
...our particular situation, and I don't know how to...
Give me my card and have a conversation, if that would help.
Okay.
Innovative way, if the city citizens would approve such a thing, any innovative way that the city of Farmer's Branch could filter further the water that comes from Dallas and take out other heavy metals and especially fluoride.
And purity?
When I have a res, you know, a portion of water out of the tap and water from the filtered water, and let them evaporate, it is amazing, the scum and the hard chemicals that are the residue from the tap water. And I think even about infants that are drinking the tap water.
Okay.
You know, anyway, just questioning if there's an innovative way that we could...
Do we have any new things on the horizon that might be, address that issue?
We buy our water from Dallas Water Utilities, and it is treated, and we cannot treat it again from them, because we would, we would then be processing processed water, and we would have to set up our own treatment plant again to treat it. So the way the system is set up right now, we couldn't do that. I mean, we test the water all the time, and with the Texas Commission of Environmental Quality, we pass all their tests, and so we're constantly sampling the system to ensure that you get the best water that we can deliver.
I would just like to know if there are any plans to do curbside recycling. Now, we have, we can take it to the park and dump it in the dumpsters. It would really benefit us all and make us a greener city, to seriously consider it. And when you get right down to it, probably, I would say, close to eighty percent of what we throw out could be recycled.
We continually look at handling waste. One of the things that we can, we've looked at and continually, anybody that ever comes along with any ideas, it is more practical from a standpoint of usability, if we could do some separation process rather than the curbside part of it, because we, in the past, we only had fifteen percent of the people who would do that. And whether we mandate it or whatever, and there's, there's quite a bit of cost when you only have that small amount. Secondly, we keep looking at people who have alternative uses for the recycled products, because lots of times when you recycle things, or pull them out to recycle them, we don't have markets to put them in. We look at people, and there's some people that's come to us with, where they can convert it into fuels and other things, and we continue to look at that and see if, you know, what makes sense to that. We're obviously very large in the waste collection business. We have a very large landfill. A large of it, a part of it is used commercially, and so we're always very conscious of that. We're just discussing today, and we haven't talked with the council, you know, I would like to see our transfer station reopened, because we had collection out there, and we had a person out there who monitored. When we have just the ones around, sitting around town, when we go collect those, oftentimes there is food waste and everything else in those things, and it's impractical to recycle it. But I want to do things that make sense and not just be a political solution.
My name is Anna Vianova. I live in Levita, but I just want to add to this, that I'm willing to also help into recycling. I, back in 2001, I did my Rosca Gola Word, persuading the Hispanic community about recycling in the northwest area of North Dallas. So I'm willing to present any information, just get it up there. After that, I noticed now they have the big containers in the neighborhood where I grew up, so I can, from my own perspective, I can say that if it does happen, it can happen. So I'm willing to do that.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to make an additional comment regarding mosquito spraying. When the city makes the decision that there is an area that needs to be sprayed, I would like to ask that the spraying be a little more comprehensive. Mosquitoes are smart enough to hang out where people hang out, and more people hang out in the backyard than they do in the front yard. So to get to that end, I would really like to see the city not only spray the front streets, but also the alleys where most of the mosquitoes, at least over my way, hang out.
Marty, on the paved alleys, where there are paved alleys, we do spray the alleys. Where there are just easements, we don't go back in there, because the only way we could get back in there would be a handheld sprayer, so normally, we don't do that. But we are looking at being a little more comprehensive and doing it kind of in a three-part stage, you know? Hit them once, hit them again, and then hit them a third time to try and kill them in all, you know, stages, so that you pick up those others. But we're looking at anything we can to help control those.
Jim, that's good to hear. I was under the impression that we don't go into alleys.
No, that paved alleys we do. Right, Stacy?
Normally, we do not.
I'm lying.
All right, maybe we should, Marty. Well, you know, backyards are a great place, because besides the moisture thing, mosquitoes like it where there's not a lot of wind, and, you know, most of us have backyard fences, and so that's a sheltered area, so that's where a lot of them hang out. So it is an issue. You know, last year, it became such an issue, we did the aerial spraying, and so I don't know whether that will come about again this year or not, I think it's time will tell. Yes, sir?
My name is Edward Fenchard. I live 2661 Wicker, and I have two questions. One of them, you know, we have the garbage bags that y'all furnish. Is there a code that says you have to use those?
No, you can use plastic if you so desire. It's not a code of the city that they be used. They were started years and years ago. I think that probably goes back forty years when that started, and there's been discussion about changing it, and the voters or the citizens don't seem to want us to change it to something other type of material, so, but we do pick up, a lot of people use plastic, they may run out of the other bags, we do pick them up, whether they be plastic or whatever.
The problem seems to be, they, of course, people use the cheap ones, you know, and the cheap ones, animals get into them, and they get scattered all over the street. I pick up trash every day after trashmen runs up and down the street, because they put out them cheap plastic bags, the cat gets in them, bird gets in them, and they scatter them all over the street, and I don't expect the trashmen to pick up trash up and down the street.
What they do?
They, some of them, you know, some of them pick the trash.
Yeah, when they get down to using a three-mill or lower bag, normally, it's pretty thin. I mean, a good, be a four, five-mill, six-mill bag is pretty strong, and, but it, we do, we've never put a restriction that I'm aware of on anybody as far as a minimum mill thickness on trash bags or anything like that. And of course, you know, if they put newspaper or light papers and trash like that, it'll light bag of work, but if they put a lot of heavy things in there, food in there, cats and people, and so, of course, we have a leash ordinance too, but they don't always catch it either, and then, and a lot of people don't leash, they don't leash cats at all, so I mean, they're out there doing that.
No problem with having cats. Our cats, and my neighborhood's got ridiculous. There are cats everywhere. And then the other problem I have is the alleys. Our alleys has got ridiculous. They're, my neighbor behind, one going down from me, he's got sunflowers as tall as I am in the alley. And then he's got weeds, trash, I pick up trash out of the alley. The phone company has come down, and they just left a phone line just laying in the alley, can't wait. Some of my neighbors complaining about that, they won't move because their phone line's laying in the alley.
Jim?
Yeah, we are currently in those alleys in your neighborhood.
Yeah, I'm not driving to you. You think you drive.
No, well, we're out there. We're out there running the alleys right now, especially in your areas, because we had the phone company goes, look, we trying to get down here, we can't. So we're running those alleys and doing, you know, code enforcement and trying to get those alleys cleaned up again as we speak.
And I did hear, I heard this, if they have a privacy fence, you're not allowed to look over in the fence?
Well, we can't climb the fence and look over.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
And I don't have anybody that's over six feet tall.
So we can't do, we can't actually do anything about their backyard.
Well, only if we can see into it. If they've got a privacy fence, we can't climb the fence, you know, we're not going to climb fences, look over, and we can't drive, you know, our vehicles down there and look over, anything like that. So if we can't see it, unless somebody tells us about it, you know, if you complain about your neighbor, then we'll go out and ask them to see if we can see in there. They can let us in or not let us in. We can't just walk in there.
I just noticed a few of the backyards didn't kind of run down in my back, over in my district or some of the back.
If we're walking the alleys and we can see it, we'll send a notice.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, well, Steve's got some seven-foot-tall firemen, there we go. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, my name is Vicki Harrison, and I'd really like to have Mr. Conley, or Mr. Fuller, or Ms. Reyes answer my question.
Sure.
We haven't heard from any of the council members tonight. I'm kind of disappointed. Nothing, no offense to you, sir, but it would be nice to hear from them.
No, no, I love them both.
Yes, exactly. What my concern, we live close, we back up to LBJ, so we've been greatly impacted by the construction. And my husband and I both came to the city council in the past asking for help, and we didn't necessarily feel like we got the response we would like to have. And Mr. Fuller has been very helpful in the last several months, because TexDOT and Trinity have not always complied with the law, and on many occasions, have not complied with the law, and we were forced to go to a private attorney, we were, we had to go to the members of the state legislature. And I guess what I'm really asking is that, I don't really feel like we should have had to take on that fight by ourselves, and I think the city council should have taken a more proactive stance in contacting the legislature, because the legislature has extreme control over the budget for TexDOT and various issues like that. And I know that the city council did not make any official, did not file any official complaints or seek redress through the legislature, because the members of the legislature have said on numerous occasions, they never heard anything from the city, they never heard anything from the mayor, they didn't know there were any problems. And so a great deal of the construction that regards us is over. Praise God. But, and thanks to Mr. Fuller, Mr. Harding became very involved and helped us to restore our property, but they do things at will, they do things that are subject to fines. I don't know how proactive the city has been about seeking payment of fines when they don't follow the law. There used to be signs on Marsh that said, that limited the tonnage of trucks going down Marsh. I don't think those signs are back up, but that's another thing that might limit the traffic, some of the other people were discussing. And then the last thing that I wish the city council would try to address is the fact that there were property line issues, and there had been mistakes in the surveying of the alley, and that could all be verified. I have myriad documents to that effect. I think Mr. Fuller's seen some of them. And so the placement of the sound wall, the original sound wall was supposed to be flush to the ground. Mr. Davis is aware of that fact. And they left large spaces underneath that sound wall, and the sound wall is actually on TexDOT property. It's not on the easement. It's not on our easement, it's not on the city's easement, so actually, that sound wall's on TexDOT property. And they told Mr. Davis that they were going to come back through and close those holes, because they're large. If you drive by, you'll see they're large. And that in the meantime, they would maintain it. Well, they're not maintaining it. It's like a rat hotel. There's grass, there's trash, and ultimately, trees will grow and damage the wall. So it's not maintained, the spaces are large enough that they will, it will affect the integrity of the wall, the sound wall. So they don't maintain it, that's not the case. They're supposed to maintain it, it's on TexDOT property, and so it may seem small, but in the great scheme of things, when they're not held accountable, then they just continue to, I think, take advantage of other individuals. It's my understanding, they're moving on down the way to Josie now. So I also think, which, and lastly, I know I've talked a long time, sorry, but I really think that there should be something on the city website that alerts people as to how they might go about filing claims and getting damages from Trinity and from TexDOT, because that information, my husband and I may have been fortunate enough to find people who were willing to help us, but I don't think that's available to everyone. And there have been other people who've had damage to their property, and the assumption that they are taking care of it through their claim process is not true, not at all. So I do think that the city should take a more aggressive approach where they're concerned. And as I said, we've spoken to the city council in the past, and we didn't get the follow-through we expected. I'm not trying to disrespect anyone, but we have new faces and new ears and new eyes, and so I would like to think that you might want to look at the issue and hold them accountable for the damage that they do in the city. And as I said, if anyone's interested, I have rings of information that would validate the fact, and Mr. Fuller has seen some of them, that they have done things in the city to damage city property, and I know they weren't fined for it. So I think the city should aggressively enforce the rules about the traffic. And lastly, I want to thank the police department, because on our street, they were so great to keep those trucks off that street. I tell you, they couldn't get down the street before the police came after them. They couldn't park on the street. And so from that standpoint, they put a lot of extra time and energy in seeing that the construction people did not invade our space, so to speak. And it was extra manpower, and they spent a lot of extra time.
Being the new person on the council, I would say that it just probably, and you're going to hate me, Jim, probably comes under code enforcement. If, there's got to be, if they agree to do that, there's got to be some way to hold their feet to the fire. I know also that it's very difficult when you're in the process of construction, they're not going to go out and do these things every day, every night, but I would assume that there's some control we have or something we could do if they're not doing what they said they were going to do in the contract.
if they're not doing what they said they were going to do in the contract as far as code enforcement.
I'm sorry, where, where did you, there, here you are. I'd love to speak to you afterwards. Thank you so much for bringing that up. Because again, being a new member, you know, I, I'm not familiar with your circumstance. I, I believe I recall you speaking out before, um, and regarding damage to your property. So I'd love to see those specific documents. Um, I do agree that we should have something on our website if we can. Because again, it is a state-related issue and for our residents to have access to, to that information would be critical. Um, so I would love to talk to you afterwards. And then Gary Fitzallright, on behalf of Representative Onchia's office, I'd like to follow up with Text dot because we do work very closely with them, particular to the issues that you stated with the sound wall. Um, and then, you know, any, we could have an update on any damage to, uh, city property as well that you're aware of. Thank you.
I had the opportunity several months ago to sit down with Mr. and Ms. Harrison, talk about some of the issues that they had. And, uh, their issues were legit. And I sat down with city manager, we talked about it, some department heads. And I understand some progress has been made at this point. If we have a problem with the wall or the maintenance, again, that can be addressed. You know, after I, I met with y'all and I told you that one night, I s- I sit up there at eleven-thirty at night and between the noise and the lights, I'm not sure how you guys sleep, but night over in that area. But we, we will work as hard as we can to see that these are corrected.
You can't walk or ride along most of the thoroughfares within Farmers Branch.
Okay.
And I'd like to see an improvement of that.
All right, we'll take note of that. You, the subject was mentioned earlier about reopening a transfer station. I'd love to do that. Uh, it was a wonderful asset to the city. If, uh, if I chopped some limbs off a tree, I could take it to the transfer station. I didn't have to look at it in my front, uh, yard for a week until the green graver came around. Having a small stack of limbs sit there and then having a three-ton truck come and get them didn't make sense. The other thing I'd like to encourage, could you consider a small hazardous drop-off location, permanently open for small hazardous things like sealed lead acid batteries? A lot of people have uninterrupted power supplies. You change out a battery, you have a, a toxic thing that you're not supposed to throw in the trash. It's small, but you want to have it sit around your house for a year until one of the drop places opens up with a, an annual drop. Uh, compact fluorescent lights, we're not supposed to drop those in the trash because they have a little bit of mercury in it. Fine. If the city had a small facility, whether it's at Public Works location, a fire station, wherever, city hall, pick a place to where citizens could drop off small hazardous things. I'm not talking fifty gallons of paint, but something small.
I agree. I think, you know, people throw batteries and things in the trash because they really don't know what to do with them. Like a lot of the, and if they have a place like that, they could take them too. I think it would be well worthwhile and certainly be environmentally friendly to do that. So be something we can look at.
Good evening, Mayor. Uh, my name's Andy Olivo and I'm only a, a resident, uh, resident to Farmers Branch for about three and a half years from the northern district of, um, Carrollton. So I moved here because I like Farmers Branch, I like the area. But one thing that I saw from the presentation tonight that, uh, I think maybe would, uh, merit some look at, and that is, uh, all the districts that you mentioned are great except one area that seems to be like you need to work on. And that would be from the Four Corners, up Josie, up to the Donut Place. I don't know if you know that where it is, but right across from, uh, Ariel Turner High School. I mean, that region there, all the way up on the left side, uh, the most, most of the Farmers Branches in great, great shape. But I, I would think that, and now that I live here, that seems to me like one of the things that hits me when I come down to Josie. My office is on Belt Line, so I come down all the time and I always go to Donut Place. But I would think to me that that would be one of the regions that I think the city, the city council could focus on to improve the whole quality of life in Farmers Branch.
I just have a couple of things. I've been seeing a lot of fire hydrants that are covered with bags lately and they like, I don't know, it worries me. There's one on Longnead that's been there for a while. There was one on Hart Side, they just took the bag off. There's one here on Valley View and Webb Chapel, I believe. And then I just took a picture of one yesterday on my way back from Walmart. And I want to say it's Ostell and another street. And it seems like an excessive amount of fire hydrants that are out of service. I don't know if that's normal or not. I never noticed it before.
We did bag them and put them on the list for repair. In the past few months, we've had other priorities. We've had large-scale failures that we've worked on. Uh, but now, starting this week, last week, we've, we've gotten on that list again. We've started to repair those and, and they will get repaired.
A wishlist of website that would be friendlier and easier to find things would be so great. Um, it, it looks pretty, but it's just really hard to, to get around it.
Next week, we've got it.
Oh, fa- wow, my wish is coming true, thank you. Um, the other thing is, um, if we had a, a bike path, you know, in the neighborhood, just even for people to get around even to the Four Corners, you know, we own two businesses, Four Corners Cafe and Coquitas. Um, a lot of people do come on their bikes, but I think if it were friendlier, we even have a bike rack that we could add there that would just make it, give it that small-town feeling. We really, you know, we really are seeing that people really want that small-town feeling. If we could bring, bring the Farmers Brac- back to Farmers Branch, that would be so fabulous. That's small-town feeling. We don't want to be plaino, I don't want to be plaino. You know, thank you so much, have a nice evening.
Just got back, like, two weeks ago, I've been in California for a year. But I wanted to say, I heard fabulous things about Liberty Fest. My son was there, our neighbors were there, great job. I just went, yeah, Susan's doing a bad job.
My question's concerning the Walmart on Midway. And since Dallas has got the permission and they're going to start building a big super center and everything, then that will probably close, is that right? And do we know what we're going to use to, uh, replace that, uh, facility that-
That's a good, and where's John?
They love Farmers Branch, they have a great relationship with our police department. They kept us in the loop and we knew about it, it wasn't a surprise. Uh, they're going across the street, we hate to lose them. Uh, they employ a lot of folks, a lot of you folks shop there. And it's a substantial source of tax to the city. So what we can do is, we're working with them as best we can while we're here. We're working like the devil to try to put something else there. And all we can try to do is beat what, what they did, so.
Is there any way that any of the citizenry can, uh, be involved in helping to guide, direct and so forth? If we have more and more information, some of us would really not want to lose that tax revenue coming in. We'd really like to keep some of it.
We, we would have, we would have done a lot to, to try to keep Super Walmart here and it just, it wasn't there.
I understand.
They, they tried to buy, they tried to buy Golfsmith next to them, they tried to buy across the street where Best Buy and that strip was. And it just was there. So I can promise you, and, and we keep the city manager and council as surprised as we can about what we're working on. Uh, we're very, very active, they'll be there till roughly 2015. And our plan is to have something that exceeds your expectations.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
When, when LBJ Express gets done, uh, there's going to be a lot of different types of retail that's there. That the traffic that that mid, especially that midway intersection in, in LBJ is phenomenal. So I, it's not going to be a vacant store right there.
Okay. Are y'all making a list of things that you'd like as far as the capital improvement program goes? The last bond election we had in the city failed miserably. I saw no support from the city council for that bond and we got a fire station out of it. I've never voted against a bond proposal in my life, but we can't seem to get those things done. The interest rates as low as they are, we need to be making our wishlist up and finding them.
That's one of the things I think the council's going to be looking at over the next number of months of, of especially in infrastructure improvements and things like that, that, that we probably will, uh, looking at a possible bond program. I, I can't say, I'm speaking for myself and I cannot speak for the whole council. But it's, it's one of the things that we always look at and, and try to see what, what needs to be done. So we agree with you that the interest rates are very low. Uh, we just sold, uh, uh, bonds for the swimming pool. They went at two and a quarter percent. Uh, we actually, uh, they issued six and a half million dollars and gave us seven million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They paid a premium to us for those bonds. So, uh, it is, and that's a representative of the city's credit position, uh, and able to do that. So, uh, yes, there is opportunities and we always look at, you know, what opportunities we need to take as far as spending money. We're always very prudent in our, in our spending money and, and we realize that your folks' money and, and so we don't look at it lightly, so.
We're in the process of surveying the street condition throughout the city. And, uh, that very well may be an issue that, uh, that ties into what the mayor was saying regarding, uh, the future sale of bonds. But, but, uh, we do have some streets that, that need work. And, and what, uh, the city is trying to do at this point is identify those streets and just exactly how much work needs to be done and what the cost would be to bring those streets up to the standards that we, uh, that we have for our streets. And the second thing is, uh, the gentleman that, uh, uh, mentioned the trash that's being, uh, torn apart and scattered throughout the neighborhood, uh, I would sure, uh, encourage, uh, if that were happening in my neighborhood, I would encourage my neighbors to, to not put the trash out in the evening, but to do so in the morning. And I think that would, uh, do a lot as far as reducing, uh, the ability of animals to get into it and, and make a mess.
I've got a question.
When we do the street survey, can we do the sidewalk survey at the same time?
Well, I don't know if that's in the program or not. Uh, Randy, is, are the sidewalks involved or not?
It's not at this point.
Not at this point, no, sir.
We don't care what they look like.
Well, no, I don't think that's the case. I think, I think it's a matter of, uh, of usage and priorities. And, and at some point, uh, you know, the city's got to address the sidewalks. And, and you know, what do you want first, the priority, the, the streets or the sidewalks? And I think that's kind of the position we're in at the moment. So we'll get there, uh, it just, uh, it just takes money, that's, that's all I can say.
Uh, the, the traffic situation, the rebuilding of LBJ, uh, and specifically to some of the comments made tonight. Uh, I, I drive around through the town during the middle of the day sometimes. And I, every day I see a police officer stopping a big truck that's either trying to go north or south on Webb Chapel or Marsh Lane. And I know Officer Stevens in particular, he is out there every day getting revenue for the city. I, I, I'm not supposed to say that, but those policemen are doing their job out there. And I, I talked to the police chief after the last council meeting. And I said, "The only thing you need to do is get out there early on Saturday morning because that's when they're coming through." That's all I have, Mayor.
I hope this has been, uh, informative for you. And, and I think some of the council will probably be around after the, uh, final closure here. And you can ask some questions and there's, we have some exhibits out there for you to, to talk to and, and the staff's all here. So again, thank you all for coming out.